Your assignment tonight. So, welcome. And I apologize for starting. I just assumed you should probably get started and the others can join us as they come in. Before we, actually, let's just do the pledge first. Will you all please rise to the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberal political stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Before we get to the group of the agenda, there were, just as a reminder, because I know we don't meet very often, there were a few requests that came at the end of the week. But because we had decided to not allow agenda items on after a certain point, I did not add them on a formal agenda. Though, of course, as always, we can add things that are especially time-sensitive here at the table. So if anyone's wondering, that's why we only had one agenda. So, I guess, are there any other agenda items?
That's mine, so it's already in there.
Yeah, other than one community, I suppose.
I guess I just have one more question. Is the cutoff on Friday, the date for Friday?
My memory was Thursday at noon. Which means the same as the village, but...
I mean, I'm only just asking because I know an extent about asking for Morel Pool to be put on the agenda. Because at our meeting Thursday night, an issue came up about something we had to purchase on behalf of the pool and how it was going to be shared with the town and village.
So now, why don't we say Friday noon?
That would be great, because that's why I said Friday, saying, could you put Morel Pool on? Because it came up at our meeting the night before.
And I did forward to Jason, I just knew that it was possibly to an ad hoc.
Yeah, so now on Friday noon.
Okay, but is it okay if we do add Morel Pool only because it is a time-sensitive issue?
I was gonna ask, not that we have a long agenda item on it, but just to get a report on the paving. Because the last meeting we had that was approved and supposedly we're gonna get together and do this before the pool opens. So I'd like to know where that stands, that's all.
When we do Morel Pool, we can just give an update.
And is it, the final thing is, is anybody, or is everybody all right with us not approving the minutes? Because most of us did not get them in time ahead of the meeting. And we'll just table that till our next joint meeting. Not here at the table, no. Most of us haven't even had them.
I happen to have time before the meeting, but I didn't, I just received it.
So table the discussion until we gather till our next joint meeting.
And we'll also table, I mean, not table, we didn't add it to the agenda. We got this at the last minute or two about asking us to put it on. I think it has to do with public access. But I only saw it just a little while ago because I wasn't, I was out of the office. But we can do it next month too, so...
I mean, next time is your, is your...
I meant to say we got it and was asked for us to put it on, and I printed it out, you know. But I haven't even had the time to read it, so...
I haven't even seen it.
Yeah, and so I think we're all in agreement that we want to be able to read things ahead of time.
No problem.
Can I, can I add? I mean, I don't want it to be a topic of discussion. I just want to give an update on something that everyone will receive that we should move on about the Southern Elster Alliance rail trail connections.
Sure.
Okay, cool.
I don't have anything on that.
No, it's, I guess it'd be announced.
Yeah, put it on announcement.
It's more like an announcement, but it's...
Yeah, well, I said Decade and Ariana.
Yeah, it's not, it's not for us to discuss here at the table, that's what I'm saying.
Great.
I'll move to accept the agenda.
All right.
Okay.
On favor?
Aye.
And so, public comments? Anyone? Or just for curiosity?
Just to carry on a little business, I was all efficient after our public access meeting last night. And sent each of you a copy of a municipal agreement. It was the wrong document. It was the document before we modified it, so, sorry about that. I was so proud of myself for my efficiency. So I will get you the corrected document.
And that's what I printed off.
With the next day, to my apologies. So, would it be more efficient if I just get it to the clerks? Or does everybody want a copy by email? You know, either way's fine.
In general, if you send it to the clerk, we should distribute it to everyone who needs to get it. So, yeah, that'd be perfect, Tom.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm glad you're here, so I can correct the error. The other thing I wanted to speak about, I wanted to address the town supervisor about recent comments in a letter to the New Poles Times. It was a letter of the week that claimed that our downtown village is not safe for children after school. Many people were, I've spoken to informally, have been upset by the comments. They include realtors, business owners, and other people in town. And I just wonder about the effects of those words at people looking at New Poles as a destination for a day trip or as a home. I don't like to play gotcha. It's been played on me many times over my life. And I did tell Susan that I'd be complaining tonight. And what I'm looking for is, or ideally, as the basis for statements, is data. You know, if the downtown is not safe, I'd like to know in terms of police reports, arrest records, you have some sort of documentation. So I've heard some very heart-wrenching anecdotes, but I think data is a lot better idea. And I think ultimately, the town has responsibility for the police. So if there's a problem downtown, I think, you know... I'm gonna steal someone's line. If there's a problem downtown, the town board should be talking about something other than chickens. Should be talking about the problems downtown. So I wanted to just bring that up because I was upset by the letter and I just wanted to express that and do it in public as the letter was.
Thank you, Tom. Charlie, Rosalind, Andy? Okay. So, I guess announcements. Ariana, do you want to start then?
Sure, I guess at the last bicycle pedestrian committee meeting, it was brought up to me that the Southern Elster Alliance is seeking approval from the town and village boards that we want to do this rail trail connection. They know that the previous boards were supportive of this, but since there's been so much change, they want to make sure that nobody here is going to try to roadblock it. I mean, I would assume that nobody is. But I figure all of you would want the documentation beforehand. So Brian, Brian sent over, I believe he sent it to you, the master plan, I guess is what they're...
The rail trail plan report?
The final, yeah, the final report for what they would like to do. So if we could approve it, it's like us and maybe two other communities who have not done it yet. So that's basically what we need to do. And so, yeah, you'll be looking, you'll be getting that. I mean, hopefully you could do it at your own board meeting.
You need us to re-approve it?
Basically, yes. And Cindy Hilbert is, I put in a call to her. She's the secretary of the Southern Elster Alliance. She's also the town assessor for all of our, I believe. But so I called her and she, I think, would like to be present at the meeting. She could do the presentation or something, so I can give you her contact information.
The prior board had that whole presentation. No harm in having it again.
Okay, well, I don't think, I don't, I mean, unless you want to have it again. You know, if you feel like you're confident that, I mean, I have not seen this presentation, but I, you know, looked at the report and I'm confident that this'll be okay. So, you know, if you choose to have it, she's the person to call. But if you choose not to, and we can decide whether or not we want to have this given to us. But basically, that's something that they would like us to do so that they can move forward.
And look, we have approved it though, so it's not as though, so I'm confused when you say it's not... The town of New Poles has already approved it.
I guess what they're saying is the new, they want the new boards to do it.
We're renewing our balance, Jason.
Yes.
I'm good with that.
Um, that's, they just, I think it's really because there's been a lot of change. I mean, in particular on the village board, I mean, it's almost a whole, whole new board. But so they just, I think that they just want that. But, you know, call her and see, see what she says on just really passing along the information. I wanted to try to have it done tonight, but I mean, it's something that we can do in our own time too.
Jason, can I...
Yes, Susan.
I just wanted to ask real quick, because actually, it's interesting. I have a $500 bill for membership to the Southern Elster Alliance that the town's supposed to pay that I've yet to approve because since I've been supervisor, I was waiting to see what the Southern... I mean, I know they got established way back when, you know, a long time ago when I was part of establishing them. But I just haven't had any contact with them since, so I haven't been paying the bill because I didn't even know if they were, what they were still really doing. So they are active and they are...
Judy Mage is the person who has been attending the meetings, apparently. And she, she actually asked me, she said that there was a meeting that was supposed to happen between the mayor and yourself. And I, and I don't know exactly who else, but to move forward on these things. And she said she didn't know why it was canceled, but it was canceled, but never rescheduled.
They canceled it and said they were gonna reschedule. They had, Jason and I and me, then they just actually scared, they canceled it. They've never reached out to you schedule.
Whatever, whatever it was, this is the message I was given. And apparently, they meet regularly. So I, I think that, you know, at least someone from one of our boards should be going to these meetings to represent, you know, all of New Poles.
So who's the person that you said was...
Cindy Hilbert is her name.
And she's over at the town of Hilbert?
Margarita.
Well, phone number, okay.
Okay, you can give it to me later, that's okay. I mean, I might just make a suggestion, if it's okay with everybody. At the next joint town, well, we're not meeting for two months, or we're meeting next month?
I don't know.
First of all, we're in July.
Not in July, we have a meeting in March.
I mean, we might want to, I mean, our town board is basically also, pretty much the majority is new also. So maybe we invite them to do a short presentation, we can both reaffirm it at that point.
That's, I mean, that's part of why I want to check it outside.
So we'll put that on the agenda for the next time.
Wonderful, thank you.
If you don't know, I think it's the same Cindy. She's fantastic, we love her. Yeah, same Cindy.
Same Cindy.
Okay. So I guess I should pay the $500 guys?
Uh, yeah.
It's a great organization.
Well, it was, well, it started by Judy Mage left and I don't know what happened after.
Well, I want to see if anyone else has announcements for discussion.
I have one announcement, which is that our Thursday night town board meeting, there will be a discussion of the new government center idea. It's on our agenda for Thursday night. We're all gonna, you know, listen to a discussion about it. And so, since this would be a joint center, just want to invite you to be there.
Might I suggest that the buildings committee be invited?
Oh.
Of the joint committee?
Um, well, that's, that's great. I mean, when we go through tonight's meeting anyway, there is... First and foremost, I wanted to say we don't know if we'll be a joint government center. Because, but regardless, we're looking to do it. We would hope that we would maybe do it together. But regardless, at some point when we go through and we get to the building committee, I'll do it then versus now. But Mike Heim, the county executive, actually came to the supervisors association meeting this morning. And he presented something he's doing that's very similar to what we're talking about with the middle school as a government center. So I have information and I thought I'd bring it up during the building meeting or I could bring it up now, whatever is more. But it's really something interesting, I think we should be talking about. And in a nutshell, it's basically, they're doing something and they got total financing without ever going back to the taxpayers, and it's pretty remarkable. And so I actually met with Mike after the supervisors meeting. I went over to the county to talk more about it with him. And he's willing to help New Poles too. You know, so, you know, if we, I can do it more when we get to the building part and just pass this out and talk about it a little bit.
But since we have the building committee, the conveners are, I think it would be good to add the building committee.
Any other announcements?
No.
You're welcome.
So which is shorter, you think, the one community or the Morel Pool?
Morel Pool.
So let's do that first then.
I don't know, I was gonna say let's do it.
So I don't know, I don't know. I don't know what it is about the Morel Pool though, Susan, could you explain what the issues are?
I'll actually let Jeff.
Which, I guess, well, one is, would be, I guess, one on the update because Stuart had asked for an update on where we are. Where we are is between Blue and Chris. The crews have widened the lower entrance. So there is now two lanes of traffic that can go, both come and go on the, from the lower entrance below where Mulberry meets the entrance there. They've cleared out all the trees. They've created a traffic island, so you can go about to drop people to lower. They've created a, I believe, Tom, I believe it's an eight-foot wide path from the lower lot up to the pool. They have spread item four amongst the whole area. They have put out the barrier stones, so people can no longer park on that big park area in between the lower lot and the upper lot. There has been no parking signs installed that indicate where you should not park. There are temporary signs put in right now on where you should park and do drop-offs. We've spent about a total of about $20,000 so far. So Chris and Blue will be meeting again to see if they can afford to do... And I apologize to you, they have paved also the whole front entrance. So there is hard pavement from Mulberry Street in about 100 yards into the lower parking area. So we got rid of all those potholes and they filled it all in. The upper lot is all signed for no parking. The challenge has been, for the times that we've been open, is people will park as they please unfortunately and not make sensible choices. So there have been some parking challenges. They've been directing people over to the municipal lot across the street from Stuart's and also to park over in the town lot, because there is a walkway between the town lot and there. So the next piece to be done would be putting down some type of harder pavement or maybe oil and chip. And then line that in the lower lot, so we can get the parking that we need. So we've come a very, very long way. We've had a chance to go look at it, please go, go take a look at the, at the lot. It looks, yeah, it looks much better. At first, there was some disappointment that people could no longer park on the grass from people using it. But what it has done is if you go there, and I have a few times now when they've been open, you will see children playing all about that large area, the grassy area between the lower lot and the upper lot. It actually makes, it's actually a very nice park now. They cut out a lot of the lower branches out of the trees. I don't believe any trees have been cut down at all. I know some, some old shrubbery was removed, but it was...
It didn't look like there were any trees actually taken down.
No, I don't believe any trees, no.
They looked like something was cut back, but not, not removed.
They have cut back some of the trees and done some very nice...
And we, and I actually was playing in that area you were talking about.
When you go there, well, where cars used to park, where cars would invent their own parking area that are now, you can't get to it because they've used, they moved, I'll make the number up, 50 stones or so, very large stones from the county area over to our pool. So you cannot access it with a car any longer. So it actually, it's much more park-like in between those two areas. So if you get a chance, stop by, it looks very nice.
It does.
And hopefully, over the next 30 days, we'll be completing the paving and lining of it, so people will park more sensibly. I'm sorry, Susan, I didn't bring the actual book.
I brought, I brought the bill here. And then I also brought the thing that I already have given, I guess, your board, now board, on the handicap stuff, that I probably might need to talk about too.
That we should talk about in the future, because I think we need to have some other discussions. I need that.
This has to do with the fact that I came to your board and I came to talk about the ADA regulations. And so, since it has to be in place by next year, at some point, we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna do this. And so I don't know if you want to do it inside, but we can do it, we can do it next month, there's no problem, but then...
Well, to be in compliance, we would have to do the ADA and there's whole other issues with compliance. It's been pushed forward a few years. The other piece we have is that a stainless steel railing was stolen sometime in the early setup part of the spring. These are large stainless steel railings that are bolted into the ends of the pool, which there are entrances for people to get their way down those three steps on each end of the shallow end. One of them mysteriously disappeared, unfortunately, they're not something you buy off a shelf. So it was $2,800. We cannot open, we, well, it's over the impertinent. We could not open the pool without it. It would be against Department of Health regulations. You need to have a railing on both stairs. We thought we can get away with one, but the Department of Health said, no, you need railings on both set of stairs. So I guess what we'd like to ask is, since this really is a part of the pool, is we'd like to ask the village if they would pay half of the $2,800.
Is it recoverable by insurance?
We do have a police report in it. We did look at insurance, I believe, because of our deductible on this, that it was cheaper for us to just pay the $2,800 than take advantage of insurance on this.
No idea who stole it.
No idea.
Like go to Kitty's house and look in her shower, I won't find it.
It's a very, very large, heavy item. Unfortunately, for someone probably to effectively steal it, they probably would have stolen it and cut it up very quickly because you couldn't transport it without it sticking out of a vehicle. There is a police report on it. I believe they did speak to the, there's only a couple luckily scrap yards where someone could sell it as scraps. So they are notified to look out for something that looks very unusual, has a couple bent. It's very distinguishable, but odds are, we were told it was probably cut up and included in with a large pile of scrap steel.
Isn't who pays for things like this already covered in the contract we have?
Well, first of all, whoever it's on the contract, we'll agree to it.
Well, the other one is not affected for the other thing.
But I think I guess like this is simple as capital, right?
Well, it would, it should fall under a capital expense because it's an improvement to the pool and it's not...
As opposed to repairs?
As opposed to repair, operation. I apologize.
It's a fiscal thing.
Yeah, which is why I'd really, I'd really be more comfortable talking to Nancy before making any decision on that.
The other thing is kind of an emergency. In order to get the pool open, we had to get it done.
Right, understand. And we do have a meeting tomorrow night, so if it's an emergency, we can still have time to look into it and see if we can even legally do it.
Yeah, we've already done it, so...
Of course, then, we would like to, but you know, how...
I'm gonna share that with Nancy and then give me a call, Jason, any questions.
Okay. So, yeah, let me, let me talk with Nancy and we can, if it is that sensitive, we can, we can get it taken care of tomorrow night.
I want to say one thing really quickly about it being stolen. I was told by somebody two days ago, they, because they have a plumbing business, so they have a lot of metal and stuff. And they went to a place in Modena, the scrap metal place in Modena. And there were six day troopers going through every single car, trunks, and the whole entire cars because so many people are now breaking into homes, stealing copper plumbing and going to the, you know, to the scrap yards to get cash and stuff, which shows the economic times, and things are not really all that good and stuff. So there's no doubt that that was stolen as, you know, for somebody to basically cut up and go cash in on it.
Well, Blue actually told me that this year is the first year of Eagan River War, there was no scrap metal at, with the junk pickup. And not because people were desperate, but because scrap metal is so, so high, it's worth that labor.
And they're coming through all the fighting over the stuff in the streets.
Sometimes we would bring over and sell some.
So we'll deal with this tomorrow night?
If necessary, yeah, but let's, let's see what Nancy says first. So, we also don't really have anything, there's no documentation or anything about the one community project. But I suppose, you said these as well, I know there's probably lots.
No, 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 but I say you and Susan are meeting.
But nothing in a, nothing in a meeting package, so I guess, you were looking, let me finish this sentence. It seems, because, and I was, as I was about to say, looking what Sally has next to me. It makes sense to, does it make sense that the simplest way to do it would be to go committee by committee or only those that have met? How would you like to proceed with this?
The first thing is to talk about overall process. Because we've gotten a little mixed...
Why don't you go?
We've gotten a little mixed up with televising. Who's televising? Because we all thought the last time we were together that we were going to be wired. I mean, some of us are wired now, but...
The Minutes actually said that we were wired.
No, no, but the Minutes are wrong. I mean, just if I can just have that real quick, Sally.
Yes, yes, they said that, but they were wrong, it was a lie.
What was actually said at the last meeting, because I said it, was that Robert Feldman had said that he would wire it, but he couldn't do it until after graduations. And I had commented that he was, about how he had gone down and done some of the Obama event down at Clubby University and how busy he was, was. But that he had said that even if he hadn't had it wired by the time he wanted to get the meeting going, he would end up sending somebody to tape it. So that's, so he said not to hold off on doing the meetings, but he would wire it after the fact. So that's what was said. Between that time and now, he, for professional reasons, has chosen not to do it. And I'll just leave it at that. So we were having our first meeting. Don Kerr briefly, very kindly came and did our meeting. I sent then that email out to all the boards, but really to Jason, carboning all of you, saying that the calculations were such that with the money that we allocated for Robert to do the wiring could still cover us having, what's Bob Fagin's company? USIA, you know, whatever. That if you actually calculate how often the meetings are supposed to meet, blah, blah, blah. We had enough money anyway, so as long as it was okay with Jason and both boards and stuff, we would just have Bob Fagin's company, you know, videotape them and stuff.
And Jason sent an email saying yes.
Right.
Okay, so, but the real problem is that we need together to agree on a, on a plan, okay? Who is going to keep the master calendar? So that if, when Jeff convenes his committee, he can just call up whoever we decide and say, is the calendar free, I want to be on? Hopefully, all the committees, once they meet, will set a regular monthly meeting, Tom. Finance, for example, is the first Monday of the month we decide that to let meet. So that way, there'd be a master schedule of all the meetings. And then we have to decide, is that person who's keeping our calendar the one to schedule Bob? Or is it going to be a chair's responsibility to call Bob Fagin? So we need to work these things out right now, tonight together, so we're all on the same page.
And then also notify the press?
Well, that's, that's a part of this whole process, so...
He's sitting right there.
You've been notified.
And also have some, and also there needs to be mechanism.
I couldn't help myself.
Well, there needs to be mechanism in there too, to also for public notification. So for example, I had no idea the finance committee was meeting except for I ran into Susan at Town Hall. No one else in the public knew it was meeting. I had no idea that the contract meeting was taking place at all. I found out after the fact that meeting. So there's a big hole here where we all sat and I believe, and Jason could hold me true here, I believe we spent a lot of time in two meetings, ensuring this was all going to be very open and public process. And yet now, there have been two meetings that no one knew about except...
The other, the other problem is that people who are around this table, and we'll do that as the second half, agreed to do a certain amount of PR that has not been done. So let's just get it straightened out and go from here. Because the good news is, for this community, and I want to publicly thank the mayor for his help in this, we got the amendment that we needed to make co-terminists eligible for the million-dollar grant plus other citizen empowerment grants. So that amendment is now law in New York State. And as Kitty knows, this is something the efficiency committee recommended. You know, some of us have been working very, very hard to get it done. I do want to publicly thank Professor Jerry Benjamin, who worked with the supervisor somewhat with me to get this all through and accomplished, and we did it. And so I think we ought to all be very proud of ourselves that we've done this. And it really does, especially for the town citizens who were very, very concerned about, I don't know. About potential tax liability for, for the town outside the village, disfamiliar rates, that concern, so...
And I assume the finance committee is the one who's gonna be looking at that law to see what the actual, what the impacts are?
Yes.
The maximums, how long it's likely to be available, all the, like we were talking about, how secure is that?
Right, Susan and I are hoping to make an appointment with the deputy secretary of state who is in charge of local government and just get a very, very clear roadmap on when we apply for this money, at what part of the process we apply, how long this aid will last, once we get it, all those things. We want a whole roadmap right out to the very end, you know, so that we can come back and report to the umbrella committee what all this, all of the impacts of this are. But it is certainly, we're halfway there, and this is certainly good news for New Poles, that we have been able to do this. Do you want to add anything?
Well, I just only, just want to add, because I found it really interesting. I actually went up to Albany, partly because of hydrofracking and partly because of, and partly because of this, the day they were voting on it. And what I found really interesting is a number of senators came over to me and a number of assembly people I spoke with, who were actually really interested in this town-wide-village concept, that they don't have a lot of experience or knowledge about it. But say in Rockland County, where they have four villages or five villages in one town. Ellen Jaffee, the assembly woman, who's absolutely fantastic, was really interested because she thought this might be a good model for her. Senator Betty Little, who's up in the Troy area, asked me to come up and meet with her to talk about it. So there seemed to be a real lot of interest by elected officials in Albany on a state level of like, this is an intriguing idea of how to consider consolidating from a very positive perspective versus a negative perspective of getting rid of something and dissolving, but actually incorporating. And so everybody was really, really interested in it, which is partly, I guess, why they all voted for it, you know? But it was just intriguing to see that it really was sparking interest up in Albany. So I think in some ways, as two communities, if we're able to really do the kind of job we need to do and be successful in putting together some kind of government that really can work, I think it will be a model for the state if we are successful. So it's for us to succeed and for us to fail and...
On that note, how are we?
So now let's get to the process.
It's too perfect a segue, I had to jump in there.
Let's get to the process.
Well, you that, well, what part of the process? And let, speaking of process, it seems to me there's what, two subtopics, your process and then content. So the process moving forward and then what's going on with each of these committees and then we're, we're done, that's it, just update.
Right.
So is that?
Yep.
Check to everyone, make sure everyone else, everyone's okay with that.
So the question is, which of our clerks would like to be assigned the responsibility of keeping the master schedule? And I think it really should be one, because we confuse them enough going back and forth with our meetings. So you have a suggestion?
Oh, it, it won't be the first time you're thrown under the bus, Katie, don't worry.
But we do call the rescue squad.
I am more than happy to take on the responsibility if, if the board would like me to.
Thank you. Okay, so the village clerk will be the master appointment.
It's, it's fine, if you feel comfortable doing it, I mean.
Is this scheduling as to both town and village facilities?
Well, what I, what I suspect has to happen, so just to see if you feel comfortable or whatever. Part of it is, now we know, for example, we scheduled hours for the first Monday of the month. So I don't know if Dave Lunt, who he nominated chair, has called the community center to basically make sure that room is available for us that night. So say when Jeff decides to convene his meeting or Jason convenes his, first of all, somebody has to clear that the room that they wanna use is available. So somebody's gotta make that call and book it, and then somebody's gotta call and book the time with the videotaping people.
Okay, let me, let me take this process through.
Well, I just wanna start with, with, okay, those are the thing, the someone, that would be you, are you comfortable doing all that?
Yeah, no, I, I just, I knew I was.
The whole point of this, Susan, is to take the someone out of it, cause we have no process, so.
No, 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 I understand that, I mean, that's what it's.
Well, it's not, no, no, it's to take the process out of it, so that's what she's going to do.
Well, that's what I was trying to explain, that should be the someone that would have to call.
Now. Hold the phone, everybody.
Blah, blah, blah.
All right, let's continue this and get it done very quickly. Are we still wanting to meet in the same location for all committees? I think that would make it easier in terms of scheduling. If our clerk is going to be the scheduler, maybe it's easier to meet here, all committees meet here. Um, we had originally said community center because that was to be wired, now that doesn't matter. So would you like to designate village hall and?
How about we take it a step further back then, just leave it to Katie? We have Town Hall, Community Center, Village Hall, Dale Hall.
The people might get into this.
Well, if they're only, if they're going to this one committee, um, you always meet there.
Right, but there's gonna be a press release and an e-blast, so I mean, let's, you know, option one would be village hall, if it's not available.
Okay.
Just people.
We can always make another call, right?
Why don't we ask Katie what she, we should do?
I would, it would be my opi- my humble opinion that we should plan on being here because I have control, not control, but I oversee the master calendar for the hot, for village hall, so I would, it would be less phone calls back and forth to the clerk and to Carol um who are also very busy and I don't want to.
Mm-hmm.
Now, when somebody convenes a committee meeting and they contact you and say, we're gonna meet on, would you want to be the contact to pub, public access?
Absolutely, if I'm booking the room, I might as well book the camp, the.
So you will book. Okay.
And do you send out press releases for the village?
I don't.
You will be, she hasn't had the chance to yet, but that, that will be part of the job too.
Okay.
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 But um, but at some point, after everybody at least starts to convene their meetings, at a certain point, it'll be much easier, because like we know now that our meeting's gonna be the first Monday of the month. I suspect Kevin must have scheduled his, but I don't know when, when the other committee, you know when they are?
Um, I don't.
No.
Okay, you can tell Katie.
Well, what Katie needs to do is.
But I mean, no, at a certain point, once they're all scheduled, then it'll be the same thing every month, so it'll be much easier, you know?
And tomorrow I'll reach out to each member of each board and obtain whatever information is available to me at the time for planning.
Do you wanna notify Dave Lent that we're gonna meet here now?
Sure.
Okay, so that'll take care of that for you, because we were scheduled for the community center. Okay, so we, the rules of the game are conveners are convening their committee. They're gonna check with the village clerk as to the nights that are open. They are going to then, the conveners are going to contact the members of their committees, telling them that the clerk will contact Bob Fagin and the cameras and all of that will be taken care of. And it's the big meeting room if possible, but the little one will work too, so none of the committees are huge yet, so. So everybody happy with that, the way we're gonna do this?
Let me ask you.
I feel, I'm sorry, I just feel like it's a lot to ask of one person, but.
Well, Brian, we haven't done a very good job taking care of these things ourselves as individual conveners, so I think we need to have
That's true.
Somebody organize us who's better organized than we are, okay, you better organize.
Well, and, and, and I think after the fir-, like we were saying after the first meeting,
Yeah.
hopefully everybody could do it on, you know.
There'll be a master schedule.
Kind of thing, and it won't be, it won't be.
There'll be a master schedule.
Okay, so we're good on all of that, everybody agrees.
Technical questions, does the, because of how the equipment's set up, does it matter if it's in this room or the next, can they do either room?
I think.
This room, this room can have a live feed, that one can't, is, yes?
Wait, do we?
Stuart, do you wanna, we have, uh, he can answer the question.
If um, we have, first of all, are we gonna have a live feed on all this, or just do we put it on eventually?
Well, if we can have a live feed, that's great, but when we, when we were um wiring the community center, they weren't gonna be live feeds, because the only way you could do a live feed was at Town Hall with that equipment is.
Right.
That's, that's my question.
So was, so they were gonna be, it would be a live feed if you, like, over the internet, but then the DVD was gonna go to the station.
Over the internet.
And so uh.
So it can be live if it's from this room or Town Hall?
Right.
And it can be broadcast on the internet at any other location, but it will not be a live feed.
So if we can book, if we can book it in this room, that's, if we can book it in this room or Town, or book it in this room, that's great. If we can book it in Town Hall, that's great, but we all know that both of these spaces are in incredible demand and so we just will.
Well, so let's, let's back up a second, because we just, first is right back to where this conversation started and we're about to make the same comments all over. The, where this started was that because Town Hall was not gonna be wired, we don't have to be tied to any one location. So therefore it's not critical for a live feed and therefore it shouldn't be a concern, though it's useful if we want it. So we just have to, I think, keep Town Hall out of it, because Katie just said it is easiest here, we're not she counted in the keys. So just, I don't wanna drift back into having one.
I agree.
Sure, sure.
So ever, so I think basically we're trusting Katie and that's about it.
Okay, now the other thing I just wanted to say is that the conveners of each committee aren't necessarily Katie the chair, because at the first meeting, once the committee convenes, then each committee elects its chair. So if conveners, please remember, if the chair is not you, to please notify Katie who the contact is, who the chair of the committee is, okay? In finance's case, it's David.
Okay, so I think now with a process to get this thing, the parts working together.
Yep, nailed it.
Which, let's just talk about the, the, the communities that have met and get those updates, cause obviously the other ones are about to be convened.
I wanted to do the PR first.
Okay, well, that's.
Public relations, everybody. We spent a lot of time, as Jeff reminded us, maybe a little more than even he reminded us, about getting the community involved in these committees, getting people to know about this. You were going to do a press release?
No.
And did it get done?
No.
All right, this is what I mean. We all have to be very positive now and really moving forward. We need a press release, we need our committees up on our websites, okay? As to which committees, we need an encouraging statement on the website saying, this is your community, this is your decision. Please join these committees, okay, the ones that are available.
One.
If we wanna put this up, the script of what's the committee and their mission statements, that's fine. But who would like to take the responsibility of getting up on each website?
Why don't we put that in the hands of the um, community outreach group?
That's not their responsibility, this is our website.
That sounds like community outreach.
That, isn't that community outreach?
I think they have their websites, Jason.
What they could.
Well, they could just send an email to the clerks and ask them to post them.
Yeah, they could, yeah, they could, yeah.
Well.
No, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about what we talked about. And that was that there are board members here who felt that reaching out to the public, getting public information out for all of the committees was the responsibility of the umbrella committee. That is the responsibility of the umbrella.
We have community outreach.
Well, let me, let me ask you a question, Sally, since Stuart, you are the chair of the community outreach committee, right?
I don't know if I'm the chair, but we wanna kind of call the first meeting.
Yeah, you're the convenor, okay. Maybe Sally, what could work is, we have the umbrella committee, we have the mission statement that you and I have offered to meet with Stuart and his committee, you know, at the first meeting. Why don't we, if it's okay with Stuart, if, at the first meeting, we can, have you convened the meeting yet?
No, I didn't convene, first of all, until right now, I, I didn't know the answer to the question about the taping. It's gonna be these taping and we could do it at the Town Hall, and then I heard, well, that's off.
Okay.
So you know, I have to know what's on before we can call the people together, so. No, I haven't, but now that I know the answer, I can do that.
Okay, so would you feel comfortable, and maybe this would be the easiest way to do it, is if you call that meeting and at that meeting, we bring all the material that we've done, done. We work with that committee to say, how can we create a model look for the village and the town?
A template.
With this information, create a template with that, with that, whatever, and then just get it back to, you know, my Carol, cause she does our website, to whoever on the board does your website.
Okay, Carol's towns.
Carol's the town, I don't know who does it for you guys, but let the community outreach, okay, so let the community outreach, you know, work with the stuff that we've done. Help, let them help, whatever, and then we'll just get it back to the two boards and get it up on the webs and everything, so there's continuity in a look that both boards have to show that. So if that's okay, Stuart, with you?
No, I, I don't have any problem with that, but I, I think beyond that, at the first meeting, they'll be brainstorming about other things we can do to get the blood out.
But I.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, that's just to create the template.
But I think it is essential. Now that we really know, we can move forward. And I, I don't, I hope we're all feeling very comfortable about moving forward, because this, the amendment was a very important parcel in January of accepting the committee's recommendations. And so now we really have to get the work done, because I, I believe this community deserves that of us. They deserve to have the work done and they deserve to have the right to, to decide their destiny. And I just really think that we need to make an effort to get the community to know about this. I mean, you know, we, we talked about, you know, and a lot of people had a lot to say about getting public input and public involvement. Well, the only way you get public involvement is to invite the public.
So is that okay with you, Sally, that we just will take this, this issue up?
Well, I think we ought to do a press release and I think we ought to do some other things.
But that's, Susan's not contradicting, she's saying, yes, but let's get it in the hands of you who can help us do it most effectively.
Whatever, I just think it is to be.
Well, I, I, I see two different functions here. If you're talking about asking people in the community, do they wanna participate and be on a committee? The first time we did this, you say, we're not gonna convene for at least thirty days to give people an opportunity. Now, I don't know if they've been actually given that opportunity yet, so the, the function of asking for new committee members is, is one thing. The, the community outreach committee, I thought, was established, so, all right, we have eight committees working. And we gotta put the word out to the community, what these eight committees are doing, how they're going along, you got any input?
The education.
Let's hear it now, and, and that kind of thing. I didn't, I didn't think it was like a recruiting function.
I think you're like this.
The recruiting function, if, if, if we're gonna extend that, cause initially, everyone was gonna be invited to be on committees except for one, I think.
Findings.
Findings, and then, and then once they started, then there weren't gonna be, be any people coming and going anymore, because there wouldn't have been continuity, as I recall. So if we're not to the point where we're closing it out for people to be on the committee, then we ought to decide, how long will that be, what are we gonna put in the paper, all of that? And then we get to that date, then that's your committee. Because if you go four months and somebody joins and hasn't the faintest idea what you did for four months, then it may be counterproductive.
Well, we, we, we actually, a couple of, I, I can't keep track of the meetings, but it's irrelevant. We had sort of defined, I think it was maybe two meetings ago, had said, we were gonna try to get all the meetings convened in June. And we're gonna start working in June. And uh, and we've been talking about this every meeting since January we've had, we've been talking about this, we've been doing the work. They're broadcast on the TV all the time from what I hear, you know, people just like live and thrive by watching these meetings, I can't believe it, but they do. It's been in the papers, so this is no secret. People have, some people, Don Kerr reached out to be on a committee, you know, Amy and the Coons reached out to be in committee, Jonathan Wright reached out.
The Coons, Jonathan Wright.
I think the people who wanna be involved have reached out. If anybody in the interim still wants to reach out, they can, but we can't wait anymore in the sense that we said we'd get the committee meetings up and started in June, and we actually already have the end date of November is when everybody's supposed to come back. So at this point, it's really just a matter of convening the meetings. You wanna say that after the first, you know, like the first meetings are on TV and whatever, that somebody can call up and say, I watched that meeting, I think it's really fascinating, I'd love to come to the next meeting? If that committee feels that they wanna have somebody come to that next meeting, that's their choice. But I don't think we can wait anymore and stuff, it's really.
But Susan, I don't wanna contradict you, but Stuart is absolutely right. One, and the first statement under the umbrella committee is that it will delegate one or more members the task of advertising by multiple media outreach methods, New Potts Times, Facebook, Channel twenty-three, posters, website, the need and desire to involve community volunteers. That has not been done by us, we have been remiss.
How do you propose to fix it?
Well, Brian had said he would do a press release.
Okay.
And we had talked about getting, just to notice up on the website of the list of committees saying, dear community members, we need your help, would you like to be a part of?
And Katie can put that up and.
And Katie can put that up and.
They can sign that, that was a sample, so what, what else?
So you know what, Sally, then, honestly, to move this forward, then why don't you and I just meet again, cause we're so good at getting things done? And let's just meet, let's come up with a template, we'll take it back to you, I'll take it back to us and let's just do it.
All right.
I mean, you will do that, then we'll go out and have lunch again, and we'll be, and we'll all live happily ever after.
And we'll write the address.
Perhaps it'll be a good idea, and when, whatever this advertising is, says, we really want you all to come down and do this, but if we don't hear from you by.
Yeah, we'll put an end date.
Date, then, well, we're, the committees are gonna get rolling and this'll be how it is.
Okay, well, I think, I mean, whatever committees are still left to convene, they should convene, so they can at least start getting some work done. And if everybody wants to wait until the second meeting to close it down, that seems fair.
Okay, just so that people know this is coming, they won't complain three months from now.
Right, great.
So we'll say at the end of August, if you, if you'd like to be on a committee, please, you said two months.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, wait, wait, let's go. If people have comments or suggestions, maybe present it to, uh, outside the meeting, give it to Sally or Susan? Cause they've already, they just wanted to sit down in a bunker and write a draft, so let's um, shunt it there rather than keep going.
Right, we, this is the substance of the draft, right? We, we wanna agree that people have until, somebody just said two months to join a committee.
But what I'm, but what I'm asking Katie is that rather than get into a discussion of all the options for this press release, um, they can do that.
And we will do the rest.
And we're, we're gonna, we're gonna be discussing it again, we can, if they don't, like, if it doesn't work out, we can change it.
Well.
We don't have to sit and figure all out tonight.
Then we're a month farther away.
Yeah.
With, with all, with due respect, I, I think that this is a good point, I mean, it's not gonna take us long to decide whatever the date is. And so when they get together about the press release or whatever it is, they'll have that date in mind, because it'll be decided and we won't have to come back and decide again.
I think, I think we're gonna, I think, I, what we said, everybody agreed, it's just you're reframing it. Everybody's gonna convene their meetings, hopefully by the end, you know, this month, and by the second meeting of every committee, if you don't join at that point.
You're welcome to.
You, you know.
Participate as an audience member, right?
So by, by, you know, we already know when certain meetings are, you guys who haven't convened your meeting yet will very quickly come up with a date, whatever, get it, you know, and then it'll get out, you know, but once all the other meetings are scheduled, we could work with Katie to send out the press release to the public to say, these meetings are convening. If you'd like to join, please come to that meeting, and otherwise, you know, you're invited afterwards as, you know, audience members.
The public is always welcome, and truthfully, our government efficiency study committee meetings, even though there were only eleven of us on the actual committee, there was a lot of important public input that really helped shape a lot of what we did.
But Katie, that is not the point, and I'm not even interested in discussing that quite frankly, because we have been for three months trying
I'm sorry, okay, then let's not discuss it, okay, let's move on then.
to get organized, and now we're gonna get organized, and you're going to allow us to get the public notification out as we should have had it out months ago. My suggestion is, I agree with Susan and Stuart, by the second meeting, if people haven't signed up, it's a done deal. We'll send you copies of everything that's going out, but please know it's gonna be done, because it's gotta be, yeah, meaningful.
I don't know, are there any other last process issues before we go on?
That's it.
Now, uh, I know finance has met, is there another community that's met?
Human resources.
Yeah? Is it, wait, is it the same one?
That's the one, yeah, human resources.
Oh, good, okay. So it's just finance and HR then?
Finance and human resources are the two that have met.
Now, is there, I know, well, finances is clear, is there any reason that we couldn't discuss something with HR for personnel reasons? It's feasible to discuss eliminating organizations or reorganization?
Um, no, not, not currently, no, you know. Right now, I could, I could give you an update.
Okay, just, I wanna be careful of that before we wander in that, that territory first, so.
Who should.
Whoever'd like to go first?
Um, well, I mean, I guess I'll go first, uh, the committee opted to appoint me and Kevin co-chairs, and we're gonna alternate running the meetings, and we're gonna work together, just organizing and bringing people together and whatnot. Um, we decided to obviously look at all the contracts and try to find what savings, if we can bring any of them together, or what type of things we may be able to negotiate down the road. Um, with like bulk purchasing of different, um. Um, with like bulk purchasing of different um services and whatnot. And we also decided as a group that we would like to add something to our protocol. And that is um mapping out an inventory of the people who work for both organizations. And um si- seeing if there is any uh overlap or possible restructuring that could happen.
Wasn't wasn't that the any original study? I could've sworn I saw a chart that had it as.
I thought I thought it was as well, but unless it's in the um overall inventory, but I thought inventory was for all of our non-human resources things.
Well, I think Jason's talking about the actual study.
I think they might be actually, they might have actually just listed them, they're not recommending what to do now.
No, it's basically.
There there are, yeah, there are two, there are two organizational charts, yes, within the study.
So, at least some of the work might be not actually what I'm saying, yeah.
Um, that we are gonna bring up and we're in the process of collecting all the union contracts and uh, yeah.
Okay, so it's basically a map of all employees in both governments.
That's what we'd like to do and then also the um the worker dis- um descriptions, sorry?
We agree with this when we set up these, that if an individual committee believed that there was an area that they're not gonna address, just add it to your mission.
We're, well. Oh, so you don't want, cause I thought we were going to, I thought we had to bring it back to the umbrella committee and then.
I mean, it's nice to tell us, tell us.
And then everyone would prove it, okay, so I mean if that's the case, then.
It can be expanded.
If I can just, if I can just um, just without duplicating work and stuff, I I think from our finance committee, one of the things we did was um. We got a list of every employee from the village, all the, we got all the employees, we got the hourly rates, we got the insurance and we got all that stuff.
Right, yeah, we have one of those as well. Yes. Yes.
And so then we were gonna have the town um be put in to match our personal, our person, our payroll persons. Supposed to right now be laying in to follow the format of the village, all the same information, so while we need it for us, instead of you recreating the wheel, we could just put that stuff to you guys.
Sure, yes, please, that would be, that would be very good for us.
And and the, under the general rules that we all adopted, the last item is committees should feel free to expand and examine any. And all ideas that may arise within its topic area.
Okay.
Oh, great, okay, so I mean.
So if Jeff finds out he needs X, he could call one of the other committees and say, are you looking at this and do you have any info you can share? Because there will be overlap, but it will be overlap perhaps from different angles. And the more ideas and the more thoughts we can get out on the table and done, I think it's good.
Right. Great, um we also added two, I'm sorry, uh we added um two committee members, Amy Cohen and um um Don Car.
Yep.
So that's great, um and we created uh a Google Groups, well, I created a Google Group so we can try to organize everyone together and post all of our documents online, it's open to the public. Um, and that's pretty much it, we also decided on, the one issue we did come up with, uh come up against was we were thinking that. We have, we only have till November to get this done and we're not sure if one meeting a month is going to be enough to get this done, so we were kinda considering maybe two. Now, I don't know if we can afford taping both of them or or.
The minutes say December, December, yes.
What's that?
The the minutes say December, I mean, I know, I know not everybody read the minutes, we're not, and we haven't approved them yet, but the minutes say December thirtieth.
December. Right. Okay.
And I kind of recall talking about like it because of the six month period.
Okay.
I thought we thought originally and it doesn't really matter to me, I'm not married to anything, but that, I thought we said November for all the committees and the finance would be December.
Yeah, they're on the same.
Cause then the finance would probably take a lot of the information.
November thirtieth.
For all the committees and then finance would be December thirtieth, because we were gonna have to collect the information, see if it impacted.
The only two that don't have that, that line is finance and umbrella, because.
This says the general rules were amended to read.
One of the, one of the times, please?
This says that the general rules were amended to read and that's where the December thirtieth, and this is our last month's meeting minutes. But as I said, we have not approved them yet, so.
Could be a mistake or it could be we did it, we just don't recall, either way.
We've got time to figure it out.
Right, so I mean, the point being, um would it be okay if we meet two times a month, is that not acceptable, I mean, it's gonna cost us more and.
I think that's wonderful.
Camera work though.
Well, budget wise, we've come into difficulty.
But what.
Right.
A problem, yeah.
Right.
I was tight enough getting that in.
We based our expenditure on committees starting June first.
That's true too.
Okay, we haven't expended that money because committees haven't convened, so I think there probably is. The flexibility to do it.
Okay, so we'll try to calculate, we'll try to calculate our cost, I suppose and.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and what, and I guess with the information, we'll provide the Google Groups to Katie so we can post that on the website. And we plan to be meeting, I believe it's, might even be the same night as the finance committee, I don't know if I have my calendar with me, but. Otherwise that, we mark it.
You know, I was thinking about in terms of the number of meetings, if we had said, I mean, if we had started, you know, very consecutively June, it would probably would have been about six. So maybe we could, you know, just find, you know, six meeting times between now and November, each committee could set up their six meetings all at once.
Yeah.
And not have, and just schedule them out and and not have to worry about every month doing the booking, it could just be all done at once.
That's a good point.
What, and whichever way it pleases you.
I mean, I don't, I guess the committees can decide for themselves having.
Well, but that's why I think, I'm still about that, but uh but I mean it might, you know, that might just kind of experience, you know, create a problem. Well, I think we said that in the original, that's what I think I had said to Katie that like, we know now that ours is the first Monday of every month.
Right.
Now with, and so once every committee sets them up, it's gonna be just a monthly calendar.
And Brian, you know, they know theirs.
Right.
Now, the only thing is if Brian ends up saying that they schedule theirs the first Monday of the month, but I think he's, we're the second Monday.
No, we do, we did the second Monday and the last Monday.
Right. Right, okay.
Yeah, the second and fourth, li- second?
So.
Fifth, fifth actually, yeah.
So we're the first, you're the second and the fourth, and we might find that we have to meet more, so.
Second and the fifth.
Well, well, not every month has a fifth Monday, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, well, well, we just did it arbitrarily, we weren't, we didn't say second and fourth, we just said we'll meet these two times.
Yeah.
So it's second Monday and last Monday, depending upon whether it's the fifth or fourth Monday.
Oh, I see, I see.
I know, well. Well, depending on what we did.
It's just the next two meetings, right?
It's the, these, we just set two meetings in advance, we didn't decide like by month or whatever, cause we figured we might have to meet more.
Okay.
Okay.
So at the next meeting, I'll mention to them about the camera and then we'll try to figure it out, back to you.
Okay, so anything else from HR then?
No, I believe that's it.
Alright, uh so I guess, so Sally, are you the chair of finance or who's?
Uh, Dave Lemp is the chair.
Well, who's able to update us on the finance committee?
I, I, um, we are very, very successful meeting, we are going to at this next meeting. Uh, start on the revenue side, looking at revenues on both, the town and the village, bring them together, assessing what will. And this is based on the hope that Susan has that the two thousand eleven actuals will be done. Because we are not using budgets, we are using actual expenditures because that's what matters, what you really spent. Um, we have determined that we can. Village, county, law and form of government can have a fiscal year of January. And to, so we don't have to deal with that, um, and that are. Um, the only thing that is required is to to meet with the control and fill out the applications should. Uh, the voters, you know, do and just change our fiscal year, but we also can have November elections, general elections. Um, so and Susan and I are going to meet with, as I told you earlier. To ascertain the whole meaning and and of of the amendment that we just succeeded in obtaining. Um, we are going to, we have and are going to plot out, which is what we're gonna give Chair of Brian. Is all of the salaries benefits of all employees. Non-union, union, everybody that we all have, how much each are paid, and we're gonna start and and we too are interested in overlap. Um, Iris is doing a spreadsheet for us on that, Jean is coming up with a skeletal form. Of those things which are mutually and then what, not town now, but what a town government must have. The, a village doesn't, okay, so we don't wanna let that go, we're, you know, moving appropriately the um library funding to a special. It's an add-on, it's like a special benefit district, it does not belong in in the budget. Um, and so we're working on all of those kinds of things and come Monday, we'll have more.
Interesting though, it's interesting, just as a little aside, because the town um recently voted voted to um go forward with the street lighting and turning off streetlights. To save money, whatever, but the irony is in the village actually. Streetlights are revenue to the village, you collect them.
Yes.
No, we pay rent on our streetlights.
Mm-hmm, but we also get a revenue.
It doesn't offset, it does, we we pay central huston for those, it doesn't, we don't, we don't make money on our streetlights.
We, central huston, we get a revenue on utilities, okay. The question is, and nobody knows how many poles we actually have in the village and so I'm.
Seventy-two, seventy-two. Streetlights.
Well, blue, blue seems to not know that Jason, so.
I'll have a talk with him.
They're telling how many poles he has, anyway.
It's just an interesting conversation in the sense of.
I'd be shocked that there's revenue.
And we're so, we're gonna start looking.
I'd I'd be shocked that 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 uh streetlights are a money-making proposition.
Yeah, they are.
I think you're missing out.
No, 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 there's.
Look, you're getting a whole other thing about revenue, that's not actual revenue, but is you put there to offset something, but.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, we'll move on now.
People, let the finance committee do its job and let's not speculate in areas that we don't have expertise.
Let's not speculate about revenue on utilities, okay?
Okay, alright.
I will bet you a street light that we do not need one.
That's real for the finance committee, now when are the other committees?
Wait, 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 I'm sorry, wait, wait, one at a time, one at a time. Uh, Katie, did you prefer to say something earlier and get swamped by it, so joking around? I just wanna make sure that I didn't cut you off and even come back to you.
Yes, I actually, what I was trying to say was just because somebody isn't on a committee, doesn't mean that when they attend a committee meeting, their input. Won't make a valuable contribution to the work that the committees are doing.
Absolutely.
So I, I just don't want people to think that because they aren't an official member of a committee, that sitting in the audience doesn't lend weight to our decisions.
Um, I have one thing, uh one thought, uh for I guess both the human resources and finance committee, and I know this is common sense and and you both know this, but. I feel that it should should be said, that since these are televised and as you're looking at the employees and the contracts. Just remember that we're on television and remember be discreet and we're talking about real people, unlike anything else, these are real people's lives. So just if, you know, just keep in back of mind not to get run, let things run away from you and get talk, you know, talking about slashing this job or moving this when people might be watching and like. Having a heart attack every time you're talking about what what's going on.
Well, I think we tried to address that earlier. In that when the human resources committee, when we were talking about committee formations, there was that concern expressed.
Yeah.
And I would ask people to remember that because it is absolutely critical. What the mayor has said and no, it is not all public information and some people have stated in the past, so please do not do that.
Right, right.
I also want to point out something that Kitty just said, and that is, yes, as a as a member. Of the audience, you can make a contribution, but this is not in-and-out candy store type behavior. If you wanna be a member of the committee, you've gotta be a working member of the committee because it will. Start to drag out the functioning of the committee if someone thinks they can pop in for a meeting, have their say. And then not attend anymore, part of the this is to get serious and get committed people to do a job and get it done. And that's, that's what we really need to do, yeah.
Okay, if I can just go back just to our finance committee for a second, I just, what I found was really positive in the sense is. We spent a lot of time talking process in terms of how we're, the process of how we're gonna approach the two budgets and merging the two budgets. And so the process of how we look at this stuff, how we look at the revenues, how we figure certain things out, how we deal with the new contracts, we even like gotten to the point of talking about. Do you start trying to negotiate both contracts now, do you not, you know, you know, do you not, whatever, so we really got into sort of a lot of the nitty gritty of the process of how to start this. And it was a really honest, good conversation and sometimes we went around about, but we still ended up coming out always with something we ended up agreeing that was the best way to, you know, you know. No, trying to start joining our union contracts together now is not the way to go, you know, or doing certain things is not the way to go, but doing it this way is the way to go and. So, you know, it was a really productive meeting from that perspective and part of the reason why Sally and I wanna go up to the Department of State also has to go back to. On a state level, you know, how do they deal with revenues when two communities merge in terms of how long you collect your revenues and we collect our revenues? And all those kinds of nitty gritty stuff, we'd like to sort of get ironed out right now so we truly know what we're really working with as we do this.
Mm-hmm.
And not like being trying to figure it out later, so the 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 stuff that we're doing is based on real legitimate rules and regs. Of the state and the real benefits and stuff, so get the information sooner than later and then start calculating with the.
Yes, so we don't get lost.
Right.
The other thing I wanted to remind everybody is, please, they don't have to be official minutes, but really urge. Somebody on each of the committees to do a summary of what was accomplished and keep a notebook, if you will. So that when it is time for the umbrella committee to, that there is a summary of what was discussed, of what was decided, what you're gonna recommend, not recommend. And I urge each committee to do that, we have a summary for finance, um, and I don't see any reason. But if you want to, I think it might be more of a burden, I think it would be better if each chair kept the summary in a notebook till we're ready to. That way, everybody can use everybody's work if they need it.
Any last thoughts?
Now, when are committee, other committees convening?
They probably have not been scheduled, waiting on the camera.
Well, you're you're scheduling yours, you're in process.
I, yep.
Yep, so that's not a problem, um.
Well, I, well, I think, do we have to go through everything that hasn't met, I think we know it hasn't met.
No, I think we need, what we need to do is remind people who haven't convened.
I absolutely have not convened, cause there's been until this very moment, it's like Stuart, there was absolutely no process in place, no public.
Yeah, I think we all know we haven't convened.
I I mean, every committee is the same.
No, it's okay, it's okay, we have a process now and now the question size is.
Yeah, that's the process.
I I'm no, I I'm not going to try to convene a meeting until everyone, I hear from everyone that's on the committee and when they wanna meet, what's a good time? I'm not gonna sit, I'm not gonna sit here and speak for the the other six members, so I can't, I can't tell you when we're going to meet.
No, 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 no.
What what committee are you meeting?
These uh, facilities.
Facilities.
Okay, well, I mean, it's okay if we can just, just go through the committee zone, cause there might be things we might wanna bring, like the planning and zoning, I'd like to just. Today with George Lithgow at the supervisors meeting, we talked about something with your B two zoning, some of the stuff, so there's things.
We're not even able to have that conversation, cause I don't know what this group wants to talk about, given the mission. So I, you know, to add things to an agenda that doesn't exist yet with people who haven't agreed to serve is, is gonna be difficult.
No, it was just, uh, well, all it was really, was a matter of, today we were talking about, um, it had to do with the facilities and um. And then it went into that if we sell town hall, because you're doing your B two zoning now about, and if we were to um sell town hall. It's a really important commercial property potentially in the village, so you guys being involved in where you, what you might wanna see with that piece of property. As you're doing your B two zoning, it's a great conversation, he and I were just talking from the perspective, I was saying, well, Jason's can be, you know, I I was saying, somebody, you know, they're doing the B two. And I was just saying, a lot of this, of what's going on right now with the two boards can also fit into some of the work that the committee's doing, so that's all I wanted to just.
Yeah, and it's a fa- you're right, it's fascinating conversation, just not.
No, no, I just wanted to just throw that out, in a sense, but I just wanted to on the building committee, if it's appropriate now, just so I can, and you're convening the building committee? Okay, if it's okay, if I can just take thirty seconds to just bring something really fascinating up there?
About what?
About what, um.
Consolidation or?
Well, it's consol- it's.
We already approved the agenda, Susan, I mean, and it's, if it's relevant to the work here, but if it's a brand new issue, then none of us know.
No, it's not a brand new issue, it's not a brand new issue, it's it is relevant to the work and I had said it was relative to middle school, that when Kitty wanted to talk about that.
Sure. Which also is not on the agenda.
No, I understand that, nice to.
Please continue.
It's okay, I'll just hand this out, um, because it's just what it is, it's a thing that Michael Heine is doing where he's um. Tried to do so, some of like what we were talking about, in the sense of uh, for one government center potentially, and we'll talk about it more at our town board meeting. But he just brought this to the supervisors today, uh, that he, the Kingston School District is getting rid of one of their um elementary schools. And so he's gonna move the um community, he's gonna create a satellite for the community college at this elementary school, take it over, create a satellite for the. Community college, take um, the community college, which is a um satellite office of the business resource, bring up all the social service up there.
I'm sorry, so why is this important for us to discuss it right now?
The long and the short is. The only thing I was gonna just say is, the long and the short of this, what he has done is basically taking the school, the county and the community college and put together way to bring buildings together. Save taxpayers' money and he's getting the whole entire thing funded through the SUNY, um SUNY, SUNY money, through the Daxton Foundation and through POMO coming through with money. So he ended up creating the opportunity to possibly deal with facilities, putting property back on the tax rolls and getting them all paid for. And so he just happened to bring it up today and I, you know, went over to him to talk to him about the possibility of how Newport's could also sort of create this model. So I'm just bringing it up partly because the building committee, that again, each committee, as they go through their work, looking at this one community, is also telling us stuff that we're doing. That's real time, that could be brought into these committees, that's all.
Okay, uh, I move to your turn.
Second.
On favor? No?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you all for coming.
You, a new turn?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, we know what we're doing. I think we're, the other thing is.
Congratulations, welcome.